Okay, it's August 10th at 5:30. President Garza was not able to come to the workshop this evening and so as the Vice President, I'm running this meeting. So we'll start by calling the meeting to order and with the flag salute. As this is a workshop, it'd be a little bit more informal than a regular board meeting, but I will still accept the motion to approve the agenda this evening.
I move to approve the agenda as written.
Second. Motion by Director Simmons to approve the agenda as written, seconded by Director Hylmus. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries three zero. I don't believe we have any requests, citizen requests to speak and so we'll move on to our board presentation. The purpose of the meeting that, as the board discussed in this last board meeting, was to educate the public and our potential school board candidates on policy governance, why we do policy governance in Othello and why it came about. Just a little bit of history. We started doing policy governance, I believe, in 2012 is when we formally started it, but I came on the board in 2009 and so I spent several years before we went to policy governance and then the board found out about policy governance from a WASDA training. WASDA is the State Association of School Board Directors, remember acronyms. And so we go to a training once a year as a board where they train us on being better boards and there are several boards in the state that had been doing policy governance and it intrigued us as a board and so we had people come in and train us on policy governance and then we decided that was something that we wanted to do in Othello with the board at the time. So basically Rick Maloney is the person, the gentleman that trained us when we came and started and so part of this, bits and pieces of this is the presentation that he gave to us over time. We've kind of combined it together and this is the exact same presentation and training that we gave to Dr. Hurst when he came to the district. So it's a training that's been helpful for us and this isn't informal as any of you that have not been on the board and board members, the whole big purpose of this is to ask questions and to learn from each other. So I hope that everybody will contribute in asking questions and so that we all understand it better and whoever's, we split up this presentation, we may not know all the answers, but we can give you our perspective and get more information if needed. So here's a list of the current districts in Washington State, school districts that are using policy governance. As you can see, there's quite a few of them, including Othello at the bottom and some large districts, small districts. Policy governance really has, doesn't have a lot to do with the size of the district that's operating it. So you'll see there's big districts like Federal Way on the west side that use policy governance, small districts like Othello's middle of the road but Manson and Finley, Weshugel, some, and so there's all different sizes that use this governance model. So there's a lot of differences in policy governance. One of the main ones is the agendas. When I first started on the board, the majority of our meetings were really all centered around operational policies. So we would, we would spend time talking about, really quite fairly, talking about things that as a board member are well outside of our expertise, talking about things like reading math curriculums and things that really are, some of us may have some skills in that, but it's really not what we do first in our occupation and so we go through these issues, whether it be that or dress code, whether they should have a, what movies they should play in the classroom, all sorts of details, whether they should have cell phones at school or not, things that are important on the surface, but arguably maybe the board shouldn't be making those kinds of decisions unless there's a public outcry or some reason for that. And so what changes is, is before policy governance, we spent a lot of time being reactive, finding out what's going on. After policy, now that we use policy governance, those of you that have been coming to our meetings, you'll notice we spend a lot more time talking about the future. Where's Othello going to be? How can we as a board affect the Othello system, the Othello school district in a positive way to be able to help the kids have a better product at the end, be able to help kids be ready for college or ready for a career, whichever they choose when they get out of school. And so we spend a lot more time driving the ship rather than riding in the car and finding out from everyone else what they're already doing. And so you look on there, the difference in the meetings, most of the time in our meetings, we spend monitoring the ends, which we'll talk about later, trying to link with the community and developing where Othello, what Othello needs long-term. So today, we're going to go through these five different points, we're going to split them up between the board members. I'm going to take the first one, which is the foundation of policy governance. So I'm going to go through some vocabulary because every, every program has some different vocabulary, so there's, in policy governance, we use vocabulary like ends, means, who does what, owners and customers, who's an owner, who's a customer, delegation versus abdication, who has authority versus who has control. We talk about board voice, when are we the board and when are we a board member and how do we distinguish between the two? Policy, what and how do we direct the school district? And systems of principles. Do we pick and choose our principles or are we consistent as a board and as a board as a whole? So, questions?
Maybe let's talk a little bit, we can talk a little bit about that idea because this was one for me that, I think it was probably the third time of talking about policy governance, being trained on it, where it started, I started to wrap my head around it, but the idea of owners and customers. Could you elaborate on that?
Yeah, and so owners, who owns the school district, right? I think most everybody here knows that the owners of the school district are the taxpayers, right? The community, everybody that's paying tax, whether they're, you know, if they live here and they're paying taxes, they're an owner, quote unquote. And what was the other owner, customers? And customers, the first one, it would be the students, right? The end user is the student and their parents. So we differentiate, owners can be parents and they can be community members, just taxpayers. And so the only one that really fits in both categories is parents. Parents can be owners and they can be customers depending on what's happening and what the question is and what's going on. As a board member, we treat owners and customers differently. And so it, so doing policy governance more and more, I'm always thinking in my mind, is this person coming to me as a customer or as an owner? And you can kind of tell by what they're asking you about as to what they want to talk about. Are they talking about their kids' education or are they talking about the district as a whole? Does that kind of make sense?
And owners and customers have, they have different needs, right? And different concerns, obviously. You have some people that come from strictly a owner perspective that they're saying, so why are you building tennis courts, right? That's obviously tax dollars, it's building those, how are you financing those? That would be an owner question. You might get a customer question that says, hey, you know, I have to wait till eight o'clock at night to watch my kid play tennis, why don't we have more tennis courts? And then you have people who come from both points of view maybe and say, you know, I understand the tax side of it, but I also see the side of it, my child is on the tennis team and so they can see it from two different perspectives. So I think that's what Tony is alluding to is sometimes as a board member, you got to decide or figure out, okay, how are they, how's this question being posed to me and then what is the proper response from me to follow up with that?
Okay, so moving on, this is a question here that Rick Maloney had approached to us as the board in the beginning and kind of go through them one by one. Which of the following do you consider board work? So budget review and approval, do you guys consider that board work or superintendent's job? The board, okay? Develop an operating plan. Strategic plan. Board, okay? Report progress to owners. Superintendent. Or could be the board, but it depends on the setting. But the superintendent reports progress to the board and the owners sometimes here at the same time. Form subcommittees of the board. The board, okay? Yep, so those are all, that's correct.
Why would the board develop a strategic plan? Yeah, turn that mic on.
All right. My opinion is strategic plan should be from the board because that's the overreaching theory of like a mission statement kind of a concept. The overview of the whole program, but the specific details or the operations come from the superintendent.
Yeah, so we actually just developed a new strategic plan. Has it been, we actually started two years ago, right? And the board really wasn't part of the process. The reason being, we set our vision through the ends and then there was a consultant who came in and set up a committee who developed the strategic plan based on our ends. Now, we had some input. As they were going along, they would ask us some questions and ultimately we approved it, but because our ends were already written, the strategic plan was based on that. So what you're saying is right, but we let the process of the development of the strategic plan just happen without us being, you know, intimately involved in it. And so, and that was something before that, I had actually been saying for a couple of years, we need to develop a new strategic plan. And I said, yeah, I'm at the board. And through more and more discussions about policy governments, governance, I was like, okay, we have set our vision with the ends, now it's up to the superintendent to be part of the guiding of the strategic plan to match that. And so just maybe another way to look at that and it takes away some of the, we all have, board members all have jobs, right? And lives outside of this, this is not what we get paid for, but there are people within the district that if they understand our ends and vision that we hopefully have gotten from our community, then they can do the work to develop those kind of plans. Because it's a lot of work, it was a big process.
So who was on that committee then?
There was a lot of people on it, it was a big community.
Staff, community members, admin. It was probably, what would you say, three or four month process?
At least.
Yeah, and our part in it was pretty small. We had a couple of meetings where they just kind of let us know where they're at, kind of a, are we on the right track here? Does this look like we're in line with the ends? And that was really our, how much we were involved in it and then in the end to approve it, final approval.
But you're, the way you defined a strategic plan, the board did that part. The board through its ends, said here's globally where we want the district to go. The actual writing the strategic plan, word, word through the vision, all that stuff was done through that committee. But, so there's a quote here, John Carver is the, he's the person that developed policy governance originally. He's the author of policy governance. So you can, if you look on Google, look on the internet, type in John Carver's name, he, there's a ton of information that he has out there. But policy governance is, it's a model that's used in corporations, nonprofits of all kind, it's not just school boards. But he developed it in the mid to late eighties originally and has tweaked it over time. So his quote is, every, very competent individuals can come together to form a very incompetent board. And at the time, I remember thinking that was interesting, but the truth about that is, is if boards don't work together, they, it can be a mess. It doesn't matter the expertise of the individual board members, if they, if they can't work together as a whole and get things done, it doesn't really matter. And I think that was his point there, is competency individually is less important than competency as a board, if a board's run correctly. The little thingy fell off. Okay, so this is a normal management structure where you have, where you have, I don't look at stays, where you have a CEO below the management, which is the school board, this is a normal board, then you have the CEO down to the staff, staff resources, at the bottom is customers and students. Under governance, you'll notice it's a little bit different. I don't know if you noticed what's, what changes there, but under governance, it really starts with the owners. The owners, the community, the voters, they, we want to make sure as a board, under governance, that we're listening to our owners, that we're a collection of elected officials, but we're really, we're representing the owners of the, of the Othello school district or the taxpayers. And it's our job as elected officials to do what the, what we feel like the community as a whole, the owners want. And so then you've got outsiders, traditional role of a board is you've got, traditionally before governance, you'd have the board and the superintendent inside the organization and the customers outside. Where with governance, you've got the board more separated. So the board's really up with the customers and the owners, separated from the superintendent and the management and the other staff. And then you've got customers at the bottom, right? The students and the parents, where the way that fits. Director Simmons?
I'm up, huh?
You're up. Any questions so far?
So I kind of mentioned earlier that it was, well, every time that I've heard, been to some kind of training on policy governance, I might change my perspective a little bit on things and always learn some things as I'm, as I'm going through the trainings. And our most recent one, I would say was the best one for me since we're starting this and that was in June, we went to our first annual policy governance conference and there was some school district represented there, there was community colleges, there was, you can't imagine how many different types of industry use policy governance. So they were able to bring a lot of different perspectives as well. So I don't want any of you to think that you leave here and you're going to have some confusion about things like, I really, I don't really get that part of it. That's okay because the more you do it, the more you start to see, okay, I see, I see why policy governance does it that way and why this, maybe this way is not within the policy governance principles. We are always reminding each other too after meetings, you know, maybe, maybe we got off track this meeting, that's why we assess ourselves every meeting. But there's some primary principles for policy governance and there's 10 that we're going to go through and I'm going to kind of share my perspective, I guess, as an individual board member, maybe some things that I, that I know the way we used to do it before policy governance and now the way we do it, to maybe give you an idea of how things have changed for me. But I hope you stop me and ask me for clarification, I hope the board members also, if you want to clarify something, just let me know and I'll give you the mic. So first principle, and some of these have been touched on, so there'll be some repetition, but the board is a trustee for its community of owners. Does everyone understand that basic concept? I think Tony did a good job talking about it. You can have an appearance of trustee, of trusteeship where you have an organization who's already in place, right? And this was us. So the organization was in place and then we decided to go to policy governance. The superintendent, CEO is already hired, you get your stakeholder groups, all right? They elect proxies, that's us. That's the board. We have allegiance, typically a board in that situation has allegiance to interest groups, right? Who are the people who voted for me? I know the people who supported me, I got a, I won with 53% of the vote, 47% didn't support me, but the 53, you know, I'm going to have allegiance to them, I know why they voted me in because, because I had a, I had an agenda, I had a platform, whatever the case may be. And board members act typically independently. Now, I think even before policy governance, I believe this board did a good job working together, but it can happen when you're not in policy governance, you're just going by your opinions on most things. You're not necessarily, there aren't a set of policies that define what you want for your organization. So each individual board member might have their own opinions about things and so that leads to those kind of discussions in board meetings. Well, I think we should do it this way. Well, I don't think that's a good idea because I think this is a better way to do it. Does that make sense? Staff make recommendations and that kind of goes up to the board as well. So you're getting from both sides, right? Getting recommendations from owners, getting recommendations from staff. And then the board, through that, you can't help it, you're going to make management decisions because of the way the process goes. The board-staff relationship ends up being that of advice. The engagement, okay, and what we'll get to later that we call linkage, ends up being the board informs the community, here's what we're doing, rather than asking the community, what should we do? Okay? The board monitors and evaluates the superintendent's actions and attributes and I'll touch a little bit more on this later because I definitely have, kind of have a perspective to share with that. And that's the dividing line, again, the board's kind of one of the insiders, right? We're part of the organization and so the dividing line is the ownership, you guys are up here, you don't need to know everything, we got, we got this covered. Now, in a true trusteeship, you've got a community of owners that selects representatives, that's the board. The board stands in for all owners and acts as one. The board hires a CEO who hires staff and runs the organization. The board exercises owner authority by listening to all owners. The board-staff relationship is through command. Now, I don't want to confuse that with that we tell the staff what to do, but we set our expectations so that the staff hopefully understands, all right, this is the ultimate ends for our, for our district and so, yeah, we have a job to get there. How that happens is up to the CEO and the superintendent. And the board exercises the command, like I said, through the policies, all right? Not individually to individual staff members or even as a whole to individual staff members. The board monitors and evaluates results and compliance with policy. And now the dividing line is between the board and community and then the superintendent or CEO and everything below with the staff. So the, under the, the board monitors, now this is the way the superintendent is evaluated in policy governance. We monitor and evaluate the results and compliance with policies, we'll get into the idea of policies a little bit later. It doesn't have to do with whether or not we think the superintendent's a good guy and if people like him, right? Which he is, but that's not what matters most to us. So the first duty of the board, and this was the first thing we got into when we started, we decided, yes, we want to go with policy governance, we had to come up with our ends and it was a big process. I can't remember how many hours of meetings we had, but really dialing in, and for us, we didn't have, we didn't understand the concept of really trying to link with community and we still, we struggle to get good linkage with the community and not because we don't try, but we're, we're not finding necessarily the best ways to get good input. I think that this year, this last school year, we've had the best linkage we've ever had and I think we're getting better at it every year as we go along, but at this time, we were kind of diving into this and so when we were setting up the ends, this was what our belief of what our community wanted. If I was to be, go back in time and know now what I, know then what I knew, if I knew then what I know now, right? That's what I say. I think that we should have had some kind of a committee to find out from the community what our end should be, but that has helped us shape it since then. They're not the same as when we started, we've definitely shaped them. But the ends are the big ones. What do we want the end product to be for our students? When they graduate from a fellow school district, what do we want that to look like? What kind of skills do we want them to have? What do we, how do we want them to be prepared? Okay, so it's, it's a big task and it's a big deal. So you prescribe the ends, you proscribe the means. So the means would be how do we get there, right? Lombardi might have said, get to the goal line, stay in bounds, but get there. You know, he didn't say, run five yards, turn to the right because you're going to have a linebacker in front of you, then run two yards and he didn't, he allowed his players to make those decisions on the field. So first of all, you identify the desired result, that's the end zone. Then you set the boundaries or limits, okay? And we're going to get into what those are, those are executive limitations that we set. That's the sidelines. It doesn't matter if you go back and forth and back and forth, within that green area, just don't get out into the red area, okay? Allow your players the freedom to respond to the situations on the field. Let me go back to this. Does everyone get this, this concept? Because we're going to get into the policies later and there's four general categories of our policies. We've already talked about the ends, that's the final result. And then the executive limitations are the limitations that we place on the superintendent on, to get there, do what you need to do, but these are some, these are some boundaries that we have set for you, we don't want you to step outside the boundaries. We'll talk about it a little bit more. So principle three, the board's role in guiding operational means is to limit the executive choices, the executives' choices. Seems a little bit contradictory, right? Like you're, you're almost getting a little bit operational when you're limiting. But the only other way to do it is to say, this is how you're going to do it. In the, in the executive limitations, we say, this is how not to do it, everything else is on the table. Makes sense? So really, we're just telling them what would be unacceptable. You'll see some of the executive limitations are like, don't do anything illegal, kind of like some ones that are duh, right? But, but there are some that get a little more specific and some reasons that they've gotten specific over time and then we always reserve the right to say, you know what, that executive limitation doesn't need to be in place anymore. And we don't want to just bog down the system, so we have, we have removed executive limitations or changed them as well. The reality is that executive limitations do limit choices and tie the hands a little bit. So the more you have, the more you tie the hands, the more you're kind of going into that, you're stepping into that operational area, all right? So there's that fine line, it's a little bit of a gray area. So this would be an idea of another visual of executive limits, on the left, the means and then on the right are the ends. Those are the available means. Those are the desired results. When you set executive limits, you start to narrow the available means. Some executive limits might be very, very specific, so they narrow it even more. Some might be broader. But in the end, all of your executive limitations will shorten the, or reduce the options that the superintendent or CEO has to run the organization. Principle four, the board must create a relationship with the superintendent that is empowering, creating an environment where it is safe to take action. So this is an example, these would be example of a situation where there's three or eight executive limitations, three ends or however many, and the green is all the available means to get to those ends. It's the delegated and pre-approved safe zone. It's the delegated and pre-approved safe zone. You guys with me on this? I know it's kind of repetitive, this part of it, but it is a concept that's- it's different than any other governance that- well, anything we did before until we got into policy governance. It was more reactive then, right? Well, why did you do that? Now it's- we say, well, why'd you do that? Because it's within my means to do that and it's- there's no executive limitation that tells me I can't. That's an appropriate answer, actually. Yep? Let me know if I'm moving too fast. Good?
So, Rob, could you find out, explain it, but we want- We want to give the CEO, superintendent, as much leeway as we can to get to the end zone or to get to the ends. This is kind of this. So you have to be really careful about the ELs, executive limitations, because you tie his hands too much and all of a sudden, he's like, I can't get to the end zone if you don't give me some freedom. I've got to be able to try. Let me back up. Education is dynamic, so it's always changing, right? Well, if you don't give him the opportunity to change with that education, with the dynamic type of education, because you're limiting- you're tying his hands too much with executive limitations, how is he gonna succeed? So you try to keep the executive limits as narrow as you can, but yet still, still, like I said, we have a list of ELs and you can't do anything illegal, okay? So, and that's okay, that's acceptable. That should be an acceptable limitation. But you don't want to say, you can only hire this type of person. Well, now you're tying his hands and how can he- how can he not get the best for our students if you're tying his hands too much? So it's a fine line for executive limitations and we've spent a lot of time on it.
So I'll kind of share my perspective on- it was very common early on on the board where the question would come to the board, and so I'm thinking about doing this, what do you think? And we thought that was our job as a board. Yeah, that sounds good. Well, if it doesn't work out, whose fault is it? It's the board's, right? Because ultimately, you said, yeah, that's a good idea, dude, go for it. And now, the way we should react, we don't always, because it's- I think it's this human nature. When someone says, think about doing this, what do you think? You're gonna give your opinion. They ask for your opinion. But we have to sometimes check ourselves and say, are you compliant with your executive limitations? Yeah? Alright, well, that's your call then, right? Then, it's not the board's decision, because how can you evaluate the superintendent on something they got approval from you to do? That was a big one. That was a big one for us to try to figure out and get our heads around and quit giving our opinions. Sometimes in an executive session, right? That had to do with something that was- really shouldn't have been necessarily asked of us, but that was the culture. That's the way it always was. And I think we've got a lot less of that that happens now. Alright, oh. Okay, that's- I like that statement at the end. The board establishes ends and sets limits, then the board gets out of the way. That's the way it should work. We don't always do so well at it. Sometimes we get in the way still. And we've been doing this for, is it four years, four and a half, or three and a half now? We started in January. Yeah, we're still learning. So Patton said, never tell people how to do things. Tell them what to do and they will surprise you with their ingenuity. The board role, identify desired end results or objectives, establish limits, and refrain from directing the operational details or the plan of action. Just an incredible graphic right there. Principle five, the superintendent performance and actions must be monitored rigorously by the board using criteria established in policy, alright? So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the way we used to do evaluations. And the board used to make fun of me a lot. And the superintendent evaluation piece that we had from the day I started on the board was, seems, he's a pretty good guy. I think people like him, doing a good job. That's really what it came down to. None of it had to do with student achievement at all. And it was always confusing to me, why is none of this- why is this not something we can measure? And we had even talked about going through a whole new evaluation piece. We started that process. And then that was about the time when Tony went to this- was the breakout session for policy governance and said, we need to look into this. And that was kind of- for me, it was like, this is what we've been looking for. Some- an objective way to evaluate our superintendent. So it doesn't come out to, I don't like- I'm mad at him this year because he didn't do something I asked him to do, so I'm not gonna give him a good evaluation, right? It's all about objective findings now. And so the other thing that was just- it kind of blew me away when we learned how this works. The evaluation of the superintendent now happens in board meetings throughout the year in a public setting. The evaluation of superintendent before was all in an executive session. Nobody knew about it. And that was the way- that's actually legal to do it that way, but there's nothing transparent about that. And so now, when you evaluate the superintendent based on student performance and the superintendent's ability to stay within the limitations that are set with him, that happens in front of everybody. And the superintendent knows, the public knows, and the board knows if they were in compliance or not. So in monitoring, we're looking for- there's a reasonableness standard. Has a superintendent made reasonable progress toward our desired ends? So we might have an end, for instance, that 100% of students will pass the assessment at the end of the year, the ESPA assessment, right? Be a lofty goal. Well, I don't know if 100% will ever happen, right? But it's not bad to set high goals. You just can't expect the superintendent to meet it the next year when you're at 50% the year before. But progress toward that is reasonable, right? And so that's essentially what we monitor. If we start heading backwards, that's not acceptable. And the great thing about monitoring ends is the superintendent is telling us either, I'm compliant and here's why, or I'm out of compliance on this and here's why. We don't- rarely do we have to tell the superintendent something he doesn't already know in compliance, right? Where we go, so you went from 50% to 40% and you thought you were in compliance? It's not gonna happen with this superintendent, I can tell you. He tells us before we even have to say anything, if he said, no, we're not complying in this area. Has the superintendent avoided unacceptable situations or conditions reasonably complying with parameters as defined in the executive limitations? So that's just the- when we're monitoring, we're monitoring ends and we're monitoring executive limitations. We compare what is, okay, versus what ought to be. We try not to talk too much about what happened in the future or the past, but what are we gonna do in the future to correct that? Okay? That's another thing that we are always struggling to getting better at, okay? Because you want to talk- you're getting reports about the past. But to just say, alright, forget about that, where are we going? That's the most productive way to do it, but it's not easy not to say, what happened there? You know? Does that make sense? And our hope is that the superintendent- we don't have to ask a question because the superintendent has said, this is what the- these are the numbers, this is the reality. This is why that happened and this is what we're doing to correct it. That's an easier thing for a board member to do, because then we can say, that sounds like a reasonable way to correct that. Or, you know, I don't know if that's enough. Okay? But it's always talking about where are we going, not what happened in the past. Yeah?
I know, I couldn't get this one on.
Yeah, I figured it wasn't.
I'm gonna cry. Hello, hello, hello?
You didn't have enough meat.
Okay, fine, I'm sorry. So, okay, I guess I have concerns about- I like the idea of always looking forward into the future. However, if you keep hearing the same problem again and again and it's being repeated and it's not just, this happened one time and everyone's upset about the one time, but it's continually, this is a problem, this is a problem. Maybe not at the superintendent level, but maybe at another level or something, then how do you- how do you keep looking towards the future if it's not being corrected?
From the statement, reasonable progress is how we do that. Has the superintendent made reasonable progress from the last time? So we're looking at the past to see if we're moving in the right direction. If we're not, then something has to change. Either the superintendent's not in compliance or we need to change a policy. But I understand what you're saying and the word reasonable progress is what you want to keep in your mind, is we're monitoring the superintendent based on progress. Here's- he gives us a report that says, here's where we were, here's where we are. If he's made reasonable progress, then he's in compliance. If he hasn't, then he's not in compliance and he's gotta tell us what he's gonna do to change it. So I know what you're saying. Does that make sense?
But some things you can't wait for.
No, and so there's some things, like if he's out of compliance, and we're getting better at this as a board, if the superintendent is out of compliance on anything, he should be giving us a date of when he's gonna be in compliance and it shouldn't be the next year. It should be a lot sooner than that, right? And that's one thing that we didn't do in the beginning, that we've learned over time that we need to do. And then we do now, is if there's something that's not in compliance today, we need to know when it's gonna be in compliance and follow it to make sure the superintendent made sure it happened in that timeframe that he gave us that it was gonna work. Some things you can do quick- fix quickly, some things take more time. But I don't know if anybody else has anything else to add to that.
I just want- can you think of like a hypothetical analogy of what you're talking about? Or if you want to use the exact-
Someone's not doing something correctly and it's not okay.
You're talking about a staff member?
Yeah. Like they're consistently having this problem and it's not being fixed or something. And so it's not affecting just one student. It's affecting this whole quarters worth of students and then the next quarters worth of students. Or it's not being realized, the severity of the problem sometimes is the case because someone's not speaking loud enough or speaking at all, or those kinds of things. And it's detrimental to someone physically, emotionally, mentally, a variety of things because of this person's personality or style or something and that's affecting our kids.
Okay. So what do you think a board member's job is in that situation? I'm just gonna say, so if a parent comes to you and shares a situation in a classroom with a teacher that's detrimental to their child's future, right? As a board member, what would you say your job is?
Ask them, did you go to the principal? Okay, so did you address this with the teacher? If not, then did you go to the principal? And then go to- I would say, then go to the principal next. Or if it's severe enough, and I've had people come to me and say, such and such happened. I said, go above the principal on that one, go straight to the superintendent. That's not something to wait on.
That's chain of command. And that's exactly how you're supposed to do it.
Right.
And so, I've done it all. Jen, I've done it all. I talked to the superintendent, he won't listen to me.
I don't know, that's a good question.
I can- I mean, I just, I mean, for- I really like this policy governors thing for me personally, because that's how we operate a lot of our business. But I see what you're talking about and repetitive problems are a problem. And it's- sometimes it's hard, because the board's focused on the end, right? And so the means falls to the superintendent. And so when there's problems, we'll say down, I will call it a unit level, you know, down at a classroom level, and it rolls a- and it rolls a pill of superintendent, then it comes to the board to say, well, once again, he's got that green space that he operates in and do you either- at the board's side, they've got to decide whether it's a- do we change, change our parameters that the superintendent operates in or is the superintendent outside of those? And if he's falling outside of those, then it becomes the board's responsibility not to replace the teacher or the principal, but to replace the superintendent, because he's not accomplishing what he's supposed to do in a reasonable amount of time. I mean, all change, you know, it takes time and no change speed. But if it's- it's the- I mean, from what I- from what I'm hearing you describing, right? Because there's many different types of problems, you know? And some of them are statistical, you know, and is the students, you know, testing and stuff like that. And then some are behavioral problems that maybe are not being addressed. There's so many different problems and I think that's where the board's- I mean, it's gotta draw a line, because that's- the superintendent's gotta have the power to address that. If it's always coming to the board and the board's addressing unit level problems, then we come back to, well, why do we have a superintendent or any executive staff? Because the board's now doing his job for him. And so that's- I mean, what does the parent do? Well, the parent's gotta go before the board and say, I think the superintendent needs to replace and here's my reasoning, this X, X, X and Y. And, you know, and then it's up to the board to say, well, are we doing our job in the parameter setting? And in the managing of the CEO of the superintendent? And then if they assume that that's the case, then they either assume the superintendent's right in his action or he's not. And for better or for worse, that particular individual may or may not like that decision. That's what I see with those types of problems. But it's the board's responsibility to make sure he's addressing it, one way or the other, that he's not ignoring it at all levels down.
And it's good in governance to keep that line that we talked about earlier that- and I think we've done a really good job thus far under governance, is this board employs a superintendent. The board doesn't employ the teachers. The teachers, Chris, Dr. Hurst, is their boss, not the board. We hire and fire the superintendent, that's it. If the superintendent's employees aren't doing their job, that reflects poorly on the superintendent and it may cause the board to fire the superintendent. And so where that strong line, if policy governance is done correctly, where that strong line always lays, is the superintendent doesn't want to get fired. And now the superintendent knows, I can't- I can't blame Sally's problem on somebody else. If Sally's got a problem, I got a problem, because I'm gonna get fired because Sally has a problem. You know what I'm saying? Or George, doesn't have to be a girl. But, you know what I'm saying? What makes policy governance work, work in those kind of situations, is the superintendent is not allowed to offload his employees' problems on the board and then it's now it's the board's problem. It's not the board's problem. And we've done a good job being clear with that where- and we've- I've heard a number of times in board meetings where we've said publicly, the person that we hire and fire is the superintendent. Everyone else is the superintendent's problem, but everything they do reflects on him. And so in my mind, there's more incentive than there's ever been since I've been on the board for the superintendent to make sure everybody else is doing their job. Because if they're not doing their job, then he has a problem. Does that kind of make sense?
So I want to kind of respond to your scenario, your hypothetical scenario. What I would- what I would personally do as a board member, and you guys can tell me if I'm totally wrong with this. If it came down to that and that final thing was, I went to the superintendent and he didn't do a thing for me, I would ask the president, can we have an executive session so we can talk about this with the superintendent? And so at the next board meeting, we'd have an executive session. I would bring up the concern and I would hear the superintendent's response. And it might be a whole different, as you know, perspective than that parent's. Or the superintendent might give us his answer of what he did and we might as a board go, that wasn't good enough. And but the only way to do that, so we have an executive limitation about treatment of staff and students, right? Let's say he went against that executive limitation. The simple question could be in that executive session, do you feel you're compliant with EL whatever based on how you handled that? And if he feels he's in compliance, it doesn't mean we do, but we could- we've obviously made it known to him that we don't necessarily think that that was a compliant with that EL. Not, I wouldn't have done it that way. I don't know if you're in compliance with that executive limitation with how you handled that. And that could always come out then, when that evaluation comes around. Now, I would think the superintendent would say, I don't want to be out of compliance when that executive limitation comes around to be evaluated, so I better think about how I want to handle this now. That's how we do it as a board. As a unit, because that's where all the power comes, is as a unit. Does that clarify a little bit more?
I'll have some more questions after.
Okay.
I don't know.
Well, I know, but he said everything I was gonna say.
Okay, alright.
I'm just, I'm a little spazzy when it comes to these conversations. Yeah, I just wanna say what-
Okay, and I'm a blurter, so I have no problem. Okay, so there were a few parents that came recently at a board meeting and expressed frustration with a teacher and a program. And some just questions were asked, but it was frustrating for me watching it because the teacher and that program never was given opportunity to defend themselves and they were attacking, I felt like, the teacher blatantly. And I understand that that's a public input situation and allowed. But that's, how do you deal with- how do you deal with that when- But that's, how do you deal with, how do you deal with that when no one's being given opportunities to defend themselves? And that's not something that you should be dealing with according to policy governance.
Yep. And so, if you remember, I remember that meeting well. If you remember, the board listened, and we directed the superintendent to go find out what was going on. What happened behind the scenes, what you don't necessarily see, is the superintendent goes, finds out what's going on, and it happens that way. Because that, we aren't going to have a public trial. We're not going to have the person come in that's accused, come here and defend themselves in a public setting. That's not what, how it should be. What we do is we provide a forum for any community member to come express their concerns. And I understand what you're saying, because, but if that person wanted to come to the board, wanted to come voluntarily to a board meeting, and express whatever comment they wanted to make, they're free to do that in a public setting as well. But normally, that's not, basically what happened in that situation, is the board tells the superintendent, he obviously saw what was going on, he went and did his own evidence gathering, and the board had nothing to do with that situation from that point on, because that person's not our employee. That makes, that's my view of that.
Well, in some programs, there's very few instructors involved in it. So even though, and I think Juan said in that, you can't mention names. If you mention names, you can't stop someone, someone could just blurt it out. But we won't allow some, a person to be named and berated in a board meeting, that's, we wouldn't allow it to happen. But when you talk about a program, there's some insinuation, if there's a program where there's only one or two instructors, right? And so, but if it came down to where they were insistent, they wanted to attack the person, then the board has the opportunity to say, this can only happen in an executive session, and we can set that up, to where that person can be there to defend themselves. So that's an option. And I think that's come up before on the board. We've done that.
It came up before it was on the board, I was at a board meeting.
Yep. And I'll say, kind of going back to your other question about, I don't, I can't think of one time when it came to a point where the board had to have an executive session because the superintendent did not handle, just basically blew off a customer, or owner. And we had to have an executive session and say, why did you not handle this? We've had ones where we could say, could you clarify what was done? Once the, once we understand what was done, then we determine, a lot of times, okay, I don't know what more you could have in an executive session. Yeah, because when you start, we evaluate the superintendent based on policies in an open, public meeting. Based on specific interactions with people, that's appropriate in an executive session. Because usually names get named. And we try to avoid any of that in our public meetings. You good to move on?
I think so.
Okay. Okay. Principle six. So this one, I think we got some clarity on this as board members, too. The board speaks with a single, clear voice. What this used to mean to me was, if the board voted on something, but I was a nay, I can't say why I was a nay, and I got to shut up and never speak my mind after that. It's not, it's not the case. But there is also some process and some respectfulness. So that doesn't mean, just what I said, you can't say anything, right? We'll give an example here. During the meeting, all voices are heard. This is again where the power is.
Girl, boys? Oh, I thought, I'm sorry. Hold on, I thought you were saying she was the naysayer because she's a color. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You didn't say you blurted, though. You gave us a heads up on that.
I'm a blurter. Morning.
Okay. All voices are heard. Now, again, this is the power of the individual board member, right? If you don't speak up in a boardroom, then you didn't say anything. It's kind of that old, I say, if it wasn't written down, it never happened, right? If you didn't say it in a board meeting, you apparently didn't have that opinion, or you shouldn't, unless you're willing to say it in the meeting. After the meeting, the decision was, okay, the chair-
The person who comes as board chair, by the way.
Yeah.
The person was?
The person in yellow is the chairman of the board, the president.
The board chair states, the board decision was, right? After that, an individual could say, the board decided this. My vote was this. This is what I think. This is why I voted that way. But I support the board's decision, because the majority ruled. Okay? If we go out and say, oh, those idiots, that was just stupid, I can't believe why they decided that, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to go along with it. I'm going to do everything I can to try to derail that train, right? Now, that's not the proper way to act. But you can absolutely say, I didn't vote, I didn't vote for it, and here's why I didn't. But you know what? This was the decision, and we're moving forward with it, and I'm going to support that. That's the proper way to do things as board members. And I think, I personally didn't really know you could, I didn't think it was appropriate to tell someone I voted against it. But part of that was because, well, for the first four years I was on the board, we never had a vote that wasn't unanimous. I remember the first, I tell this story, because I remember the first vote that was, that was split. And I cheered a little bit, and it was probably inappropriate in a board meeting. And I said, I'm sorry. I said, I'm just so happy that we're getting more comfortable as board members to actually speak our minds, and not always agree with each other. And I still feel that way, because we don't always agree with each other, and that's okay. So now, we all have the opportunity to say why. It's going to be on public record, now it's going to be on video. And so, anyone maybe who is our constituent, and we're, hopefully, the way we're voting is, we've had the chance to talk to our constituents about what they think, and we're voting what we've heard, they know, well, at least that board member list heard me, and they voted on what they heard, right? Does that one make sense anymore? You want to talk about principle six anymore, or we good with that? Okay.
Can you, I don't know if you can express it.
Yeah.
I just, I can appreciate the comment on, if you're the dissenting member, right? And it's important, that that's just part of the process of vetting ideas. But to go around and naysay and badmouth after the fact, that can cause a decision, you know, you can create a self-fulfilling prophecy. If you've got one person who actively strives to destroy what was created by the majority, it can cause it to fail as easily as anything.
It's a slap in the face of democracy, too, right?
But-
But it can happen, and people have the right to do that as well. One of the things that, so many times we asked questions in policy governance training, our first one, and I loved their answer so many times, was, nope, unless three of you think you should. And that's the truth. If three board members agree that something should be done, and it's totally against policy governance, that's all it takes is three votes out of five. And so, that is always the trump card, right? We follow policy governance, but the day three board members say, I don't want to, policy governance could go down the tube. And I hope that never happens, because we worked hard to get here, and I think it, for the first time, we can hold the superintendent, really hold them accountable for student achievement, and that's one of the things I love about it. Ready to move on to principle seven? Board decisions should be policy-level decisions. This is, I alluded a little bit to decisions as opinions, right? One of the ways we evaluate ourselves is, we're board decisions, at every board meeting, you've heard that, for the ones who have been in the board meetings, were our decisions today based on policy, right? And one of the things we struggle with, we want to get better at before we even have a conversation, because sometimes you go into a board meeting, and you say, okay, I want to discuss this. We should always have the policy, and Stuart does a good job reminding us of this, the policy that supports that discussion. If we're talking about something that doesn't, isn't supported by policy, we shouldn't be talking about it, because we're going outside of our policies. Sometimes things come up, questions come up on the fly, and you don't necessarily have the fly, the policy off the top of your head, but we have a lot of policies, and trying to remember the exact policy isn't always easy. So being prepared for board meetings is huge, and knowing what policies you're going to discuss. So a policy is a plan or course of action intended to influence and determine decisions and actions, in case there's some of you that didn't really understand what the idea of the policy was. One thing we can say, too, when I talk about policies, when I got on the board, we had a book, two binders this thick of policies, right? Three? Sorry, three binders. And there were, apparently, I lost that one. I think I opened the first one, and after about 20 minutes, said, what? The board, my understanding is, the school board's previous to the one that I was on, had not written one of those policies, right? What happens is, the Washington State School Directors Association, WASDA, that Tony talked about earlier, they have a legal team. When the legislature makes legislative decisions that affect schools, the legal team from WASDA puts together a sample policy, sends it off to the superintendent of the school, and says, you should look at this, because if you don't adopt some kind of a policy on this, you're going to be out of compliance, right? Transgender bathrooms, that type of thing, right? New legislation, okay, if we don't do something, we're going to be out of compliance with state law. We look at as board members and say, well, what are we going to argue with an attorney's writing for? Yep, looks good, we'd approve it. And it would be one more to the thousands of other policies. When we switched to policy governance, we had the opportunity to write every policy that we have. Now, I'm not saying we wrote them all from scratch. We had a lot of sample policies. And we went through and a lot, with a lot of them, and picked the ones, yeah, I think that applies to us in our district. The ends was a lot more involved of us actually wording them and everything the way we wanted. But we had the opportunity to actually write all those policies. In one day, we then made every other policy in the district, we call them district operating policies. They're not ours anyways. These are operating policies to be compliant with state law. So that, if you read in the webpage, our school webpage, when you see board policies and district operating policies, that's a difference. Those district operating policies were our old board policies. So we had to approve all those one at a time when they get changed. We'd read it. We'd act like we're going to change something maybe, but then in the end go, why would we change it? And then it would take up, you know, a half an hour of our meeting just to do something that was inconsequential. There's nothing we were going to be able to do about it. And so, that's also where a big part of our power is, is in policy writing. Putting it in writing ensures clarity, effective communication, deliberation before speaking, commitment. The board decided this, because there are board policies. It avoids amnesia, I love that one. You didn't tell me that. Well, it's in policy. If you weren't aware of the policy, that's on you, right? And then protection of the superintendent and board against individual or renegade board members. If a board member comes in, and they just want to give their opinion and say, we shouldn't do it this way, because I don't think it's the right way to do it, it's easy as a policy governance board to just kind of steer back to, well, is it in compliance with policy or out of compliance? And if it's in policy, then it's okay. If it's not in policy, then we're talking about something that we shouldn't. Or you need to come to the next board meeting with a policy, and then everyone will vote whether or not they think that should become a board policy, right? And so that's, that's happened, where board members have come and say, here's a policy that I think is important for us, because I think this might be an area that we're not paying enough attention to, and so let's make this a policy. And there's, coming up, I think there's going to be the opposite. Hey, there's some policies that are, that are a little bit too hand-tying, and we could probably get rid of some of those executive limitations, because we don't feel we need them. And it's just one more thing that we have to monitor, that isn't really needed. You guys with me? Any questions on that? Principle eight. Did you notice that I got a lot of slides compared to Tony, by the way?
You have 10, plus.
Delegation. That's a good delegator. Policies should be formulated by determining the broadest values before progressing to more narrow ones. So this would be when you write a new policy. The concept is, first have a very broad statement in your policy. All right? So for an example, staff compensation, right? With respect to employment compensation and benefits for employees, the superintendent shall not fail to employ the highest quality staff at the most reasonable cost to the district, nor jeopardize the fiscal integrity of the, I think it's supposed to be, or the public image of the district. Okay? Pretty broad, right? But in no way are we saying who the superintendent can or can't hire. We're just making a very broad statement. Now, from there, you could then start putting some stricter, more narrow guidelines on it, right? Another really good graphic. Broad statement.
Graphic's got to be a little more-
It's incredible, really. It's high-tech. There you go. Did you do that? Okay, so then, you'll see a lot of ours then have that overarching statement, and then we get a little more specific about clarifying what we mean. Accordingly, the superintendent may not, now this is where you-
This is a sample policy.
Yeah, this is in ours, this is a sample policy. May not change his or her own compensation and benefits, as evidenced by the annual contract and district records. Now, in the overarching statement, it doesn't say that the superintendent can't decide what they pay themselves, right? So maybe we want to, you know, so whoever wrote this, maybe we want to make sure that's in there. Maybe they had a bad experience with a previous superintendent, and that's why they put that in there. Who knows, right? Most of these things come from experiences of boards, and things that they've had, or they're concerned about. You can see how, I don't have to read every one of these, but they get things more specific So, then progressively greater detail. The whole idea is, enough to communicate the board's intent, but not one step further than that. After that, if you just got a board member wanting to throw something in there, because, you know, I don't know, my aunt, I don't think she got good enough insurance benefits, and so I think we should have something in there, you know, who knows? I don't really know what the graphics are even doing.
Not one step further, that's what I'm trying to say. It went to green, not this area. It should have been red. Can you go back to number eight slide?
The graphics went a step further, I think, is what happened right there.
I don't write fast like I was in college anymore.
Yeah. We could give you a copy of it.
Um, no. I won't look at it again. I'll just look at my notes, because I'll look at what was important for one at a time.
I had to click 17 times, by the way, to get through the graphics, get back there.
So to clarify that line, I'm assuming that line being the separation between an ends and a means. That's what we're watching for.
Well, so these are the executive limitations. This was an example of an executive limitation, so it was a little bit of a means. But, once you start looking at, I imagine this is going to lead you to say, okay, I'm going to start reading the policies now. I kind of understand how they work, I'm going to start reading them. We had this question, executive limitations are funny. They basically don't say, I'll try to think of a good analogy for the superintendent. The superintendent will not wear shorts to work, right? No, you don't say that. You don't tell the superintendent what to do. They're instead worded like, the superintendent shall not fail to wear long pants to work. So it's a double negative, but it's really saying, you're not going to do this. It's the way that Carver wrote these, and kind of the way he did it, it's silly to me. And some districts have said, you know what, it's kind of silly doing it that way. Let's just say what we mean, which is, the superintendent's not going to wear shorts to work. Okay? So when you read them, that's why they're written in a double negative perspective, because it's like, it must have made the boards feel better that, no, I'm not telling them what to do.
Or they just don't want people to read them.
I'm telling them what not to do.
Burn them out on-
I guess, so it was kind of funny. We had those questions, and they kind of admitted it was, it was an interesting way to write executive limitations.
You have to executive.
Oh, jeez. So, not what he's going to do, but he will not do this, right? So when you say, the superintendent may not fail to recommend for board approval salaries that represent fair and competitive compensation for employees, you're saying, superintendent, you're going to make sure that you proved to us that these are fair and competitive salaries that you're putting out there, right? So it is saying you're going to do this, but it's in a different way. So if you read those and you're wondering why, that's, I don't have an answer. Then that's just the way policy governance is done in most organizations and districts.
But also to go along with that, we don't tell, we give it up to him on most of our policies.
Okay. Where was that again? So he can't fail to recommend for the board approval salaries that represent fair and competitive. Okay, what's the definition of fair and competitive?
And that goes back to what we were talking earlier, reasonableness.
No. And so, again, we allow, we allow him that flexibility of what is reasonable, and so he- And so he just doesn't say, "Okay, here's the salaries. Approvable." And so, "Well, are they fair and competitive? Yeah, they are, just approval." "No, tell us how it is fair and competitive." And he does that because he knows that's going to be required. But that's part of that reasonableness that we talked about earlier.
On the other hand, too, we may not feel that it's fair and competitive. We don't think it's necessarily reasonable in that way individually. But the reason that still gives him leeway is he might say, he could say, "Well, I think that's fair and competitive based on research I've done." Okay, then that's its interpretation of it.
And if we don't like it, then we have to go back and rewrite the policy.
That's the key, yeah.
And limit it a little bit more, saying, "No, this is how we're going to define fair and competitive."
So if, for example, the board decided that whatever measure Dr. Hurst was using for fair and competitive that we disagree with as a board, the board can go back and rewrite the policy and we could say, "Fair and competitive based on this measure," whether it's the throw-out turns, whether you say, "Okay, we want to make sure we're fair and competitive with the average of these ten districts and here's the ten districts." We can do that as a board and put it in the policy. We don't do that, but you could. If the board decided we disagree with what the superintendent says is fair and competitive, then we change the policy to the way the board wants it. And then the superintendent has to follow the policy. Does that kind of make sense?
Obviously, this is totally out the cuff. It is not real life and what happened. But for instance, the superintendent comes back and says, "Okay, we got, I just hired a new assistant superintendent and this is what I believe they should be paid because that's what Bellevue's assistant superintendent gets paid." And we go, "Well, who else? Just Bellevue." "Why would you say that's fair and competitive? Because we want our scores to be as good as Bellevue, so..." Right, that's his reasoning and it's kind of, you kind of have to get that leeway to say... Now, first of all, he wouldn't do that and he does get our input on, kind of, to feel us out about, "Am I on the right track here or am I out of bounds?" But realistically, it would be hard for us to find him out of compliance because we haven't written what he believes would be fair and competitive. And like they said, then our next thing would be, we would have to rewrite the policy for next time to say, "Not including Bellevue." You may not use Bellevue in this.
So then in that case, would he then become uncompliant because you rewrote the policy? Or how does that compliance part work?
Yes, we could rewrite the policy because you don't have to rewrite the policy only when you monitor them. We could as a board rewrite the policy the next board meeting and...
And then it has to be compliant.
If the contract's already signed, it's going to be the next year, right? But we could do that, but then that is where you're delving into operational. I would say if it came out of that...
And this is totally...
You're having a problem with your superintendent at that point anyways. And so, it hopefully never comes to that.
But it does make it so that they would be out of compliance. Right, and that one instance, right, doesn't apply, but for future...
You can change the policy anytime.
And then they're instantly out of compliance. If you changed the policy and you're changing it because you weren't happy with something and they weren't, okay.
But that would not be talked about in a board meeting until it's monitored.
And you already have a set agenda on a calendar of when you're monitoring each of those ELs.
All EL, all policies are monitored throughout the year.
On a specific time.
One time, except there is an ends that we do mid-year.
Okay.
Okay, we good there? Ready to move on? Did you write it down?
I did.
Oh, we're still on the same one. Okay, principle nine. The board should define and delegate, not react and ratify. So proactive rather than reactive, right? Is what that's talking about. And so that's what we try to do through policy. We define it, we delegate then the means to the superintendent rather than saying, "Wait a minute, what are we doing that for?" And in that case would be react and ratify if we were to rewrite a policy specifically because of that conversation at the next board meeting. That's not what we want to do as a board. The superintendent should be asking, "What has the board already said?" Not what will the board say. And I think Dr. Hurst does a good job of that. He really listens to, I think he's always paying attention, listening to the conversations we have. I don't think it's happened yet where we go, "Did he really just ask us if we'd be okay with that?" Has he not been listening for the last year? I mean, I don't think that's happened at all. And I think he does a good job listening and so he knows what the board, what our core principles are. And so, and we give him that leeway. We want someone to be innovative and that's who he is. And we give him that leeway to be innovative, but be within the boundaries. Apparently, we're having a little refresher here. You guys remember this one? Okay. There's a summary. The board, okay, principle ten. The board establishes its own culture using policy statements. So we've talked about ends and ELs. The board also has policies for ourselves and those are board superintendent relations, the BSRs, and governance policies, the GPs. And we hold ourselves accountable for the way we govern through those policies. We also evaluate ourselves on those throughout the year and at the end of the year, we have to do a general evaluation. We evaluate ourselves after each board meeting just for how we conducted the meeting, but we evaluate ourselves based on the GPs and the BSRs throughout the year as well.
GP is general?
Governance process.
And what was it, your B blah blah?
Board superintendent relations.
Okay.
BSR. Okay, so essentially, one defines how the board governs. The other one defines how the board interacts with and delegates to the superintendent. What we will and will not do. Like, for instance, we will not individually try to go to the superintendent and influence decisions. That is just one example, right? Am I done already?
All right, Stuart.
You can run that for me.
There it is.
Okay. And so just what we were talking about, so the ends, the executive limitations, which we've covered quite a bit. And then we have the governance process and the board superintendent. So we'd go GPs, BSR, ELs, and ends. So again, left side, we're guiding the superintendent, ourselves, the school board president, and then the ends and the ELs guide the superintendent.
To clarify, and we don't use the term chair. Was the reason because we don't have a big enough district? Is that what it was? It was something silly. We don't use the term chair, we use president for the head of our board. But the reason that guides the president because the president's really in charge of making sure that ultimately the board is following our governance principles. The board as a whole holds herself responsible, but he is, or she is our boss, kind of, and the one that runs the meeting and keeps track of us. But we all should at any time, if we see that we're not operating within those boundaries, we say, "Hey..." And you guys may have witnessed it sometimes when we go, "We're getting off track here." Hopefully, because sometimes we do.
Okay, and then next to monitoring. So the policy governance, the cycle. So we set the policy. The staff does the work. We monitor once a year, except for the one ends. So then we judge the results, see how we're getting, review the policy. Do we need to change? Do we need to modify? Do we need to keep it? Do we need to take it out? So this is a continuing cycle that we do once a month. At one board meeting, we're reviewing policy. That's what we do. And we just, this isn't our calendar, this is just an example. But we continually cycle. We do ends once a month, don't we? Yep.
We only have enough ends to do once a month, but we, you know, they're spread out.
Yep.
And the superintendent determines when, based on information he gives, when's the best time to report on that specific policy. And so, he helps to set up the calendar.
Right, and it's, we don't have, this is, it has to be this. It's in, we change it. Once a year, we go back and review it. Was this the best time to review this policy? And we might move it a month or here, six months, it just depends. And with Dr. Hurst, you know, now that he's done more than one cycle of this, he's like, "No, this really should be evaluated at this point in time and stuff." So, but this is just a continuing cycle that we do. And Tony actually come up with our calendar, did a nice job, nice coloring, color-coded, so... Now it's all color-coded. Yep, black and red. No, this presentation was from...
This is the one that we were given.
Yep. And so like I said, you can see, so the calendar, which is, is ours GPA8 also? Yep. So our GPA8, so you can go to our GPA8 and look at our calendar. Eight point one. And you'll see we have several things in the other. Those are kind of reminders to us. We have just an example, a new teacher breakfast that we all tried to attend to and that would be in the other column usually, so... Okay. So, one of the things about policy governance is to... We had a lot of meetings before policy governance. It was not unusual to go to midnight or later. That happened quite often. And as we get better with policy governance, actually, our meeting time has decreased because we're trying to focus strictly on policy and we're not trying to focus on the operating side of it. And where earlier, before we went to policy governance, we were focusing on the operating side of it and it took a lot of time because everybody has their opinion and there's a lot of discussion about it.
Yeah, so for an example, I remember first being on the board and it wasn't wrong or right. It was right at the time because that's what we did. But I remember getting the high school's code, student handbook and going. We went through it page by page, read the whole thing and said, "I don't know, maybe we should have cell phones between periods." Maybe, and the board was making all these decisions, when we should have cell phones, whether they should have shorts below the knee or above the knee, where should the holes be? I mean, I remember like a whole meeting talking about. But which in today's world, with policy governance, that's not something we would be involved in at all unless a group of, unless a group of customers came to the board and said, "We don't think the handbook is written correctly." And still, the board wouldn't be involved. All the board would do is say, "Chris, you need to go find out how they wrote that handbook." Because we have a policy that says that the public will be involved in the writing of the handbook. That's all, we have a policy that says that now. But it's kind of comical, but, I mean, we'd have three-hour meetings deciding how long people's shorts should be, which is really not the board's role. And so it changes your whole meeting.
So like, me as a student rep and I had like another student come to me, I would go straight to Dr. Hurst instead of coming to you guys, right?
Go to the principal.
Okay.
It depends what it is. It might be the teacher first. If it's something but teacher, principal, then Dr. Hurst.
So like dress code because it's a huge issue, I would go to the principal and then if he didn't...
If you brought that up in a board meeting, which has been brought up every single year by the student reps, by the way, what we've told them consistently every time is, is you need to get involved in the committee where they're asking for students' voice. They are asking for students' voice in the committee every year that they have. And it's human nature, right? All of us are kind of that way to some extent that we don't necessarily maybe pay attention to what's going on until it affects us and then we're like, "What the heck just happened? Now I can't wear shoes and now I'm mad and how do I change this?" And we need to make sure we're always incentivizing people to get involved in the process. And so we, like in that situation, we would, we have directed the student reps, go back, find out who is on the committee. And if those people aren't representing the school, you need to get different people on that committee so that you can make change, right? But you go through the committee in that example. So a committee recommends to the principal, the principal recommends it to the superintendent. The board approves it, but it's really just they follow the policy or not and we just approve it in consent agenda because if it's something we have to do, I don't think we actually approved the handbook anymore because we found out we didn't have to, but... But does that kind of make sense? But as a student rep, the board's always going to come back to you and say, "Okay, what have you done? Who have you talked to?"
Now, if you go to that principal and say, "What students were on that committee?" And the principal said, "We didn't have a student." The board should know about that because that would be not compliant with an executive limitation. And you're the first student rep to ever go through school board school because it's the first time you've ever done school board school. So make yourself familiar with policies as well so that when you're having discussions or bringing things to us, it's on a policy level. Now, here's a great thing, they're not three binders of policies. They're like two pages, so...
Which of you is the best policy writer or under comprehender? You all said a different person.
If you're asking who wrote, who's written the most policies, that'd be a different answer.
In fact, I think he's still in the process of rewriting one currently. Yeah. Okay. So the format for our monitoring reports. So policy, is it in compliance? The interpretation... Where are more graphics? So interpretation of the policy and then the supporting information and data. So the interpretation, that's, Dr. Hurst has his interpretation. We agree or disagree with his interpretation and then as we talked earlier, what the process is if we disagree with his interpretation. And then Dr. Hurst provides us the support, the information and the data to support whatever the policy says. If it's graduation rates or what is it? So...
Lot of discussions on interpretation of policies and... If you, so if it gets to a point of a monitoring report and superintendent presents a monitoring report, "This is my interpretation of the policy." And we as a board say, "That is way off. You really still can't find them out of compliance." And it's tough for me on this, for me personally, because that is his interpretation of it. And we struggle with that for a while. And so what we did, and I think it made the most sense and I think Dr. Hurst wanted to do it, he gave us his interpretation of the policies when he first started at the district. We asked him, "So what do you think, what's it mean to you?" And so now any misinterpretation might just be a very small semantic, right? It's not the overall idea of the policy. And so usually going into it, we know that he's got the interpretation. We already understand his interpretation because we talked about it. And so then it's just a matter of, does the data support the interpretation?
So policy governance, the model benefits, the systematic components, the GPs governing policies that guide the board and superintendent. Okay. Performance standards for the board and superintendent and the evaluation form, a format for the board and superintendent. So we evaluate ourselves as the board and we evaluate Dr. Hurst. That's the only person we evaluate. That's who we hire and fire. We don't evaluate assistant superintendents or anybody else. We only have one person. And then the strategic plan, as we talked earlier, the results for the students, calendar year, calendar of board work, the agendas for the year. We put them out in advance for the public. So hopefully, if they have the opportunity to review and if they have something they want to comment about, they don't like a policy, they don't, maybe they don't like how we wrote the policy. We always encourage feedback from our community and our customers.
That... That, having an annual board calendar, for this board anyway, is something that's, as one board member speaking, has been such a differentiator from what we did before. When I was, before policy governance, we didn't have an annual calendar. I'd get the board packet, back when I started, it was by mail, we didn't have the technology that we do now, and I'd open the board packet thinking, I wonder what's in the board meeting this time, I wonder what we're talking about, I don't have any idea, I don't think any of the other board members did either, you know? You'd look and say, oh, yes, we're talking about this, this board meeting. Now, yeah, even the president didn't know, because everything was run by the superintendent. That's how the board used to work. Now, I know, October fifteenth board meeting, I already know what we're going to talk about. We're going to talk about the three E Ls that we're monitoring, we're going to review two Ns, an EL, it's in the calendar a year in advance, so. So it's, the structure that we have in our meetings is so much different than it was before we had, before we had really a model to base it on. It's night and day having been under both systems. You know, we have a board meeting coming Monday, and this next Monday, the board packet becomes live on Friday, but I already know pretty much what's in it. There's some consent agenda items, who got hired, who didn't, who resigned, that kind of stuff, you don't know till you open the packet, but it's really not, as long as everything's happening within the policies, it's really not a big deal, that part of it, as far as I'm concerned, because the superintendent's following the parameters we gave him. And so it makes my job as a board member a lot easier, now that we have these, everything structured, the annual calendar, we're monitoring the superintendent every single meeting, there's no meeting, there's no reason to have a four-hour executive session to decide if the superintendent's doing a good job, we've done it all year long, we just put all the reports we've done all year, monitoring the superintendent and public into one single document, and then write, here's our overview from everything we've already monitored. It's really efficient, the system is, it's worked, I think, really well.
Right, so actually go back to the monitoring document. So this is, we do this every month, this is part of his evaluation, they said this, instead of, actually, if you've ever been, I'm sure most of you, if you've ever been through that, they say, you know, talk about, if you have an issue, you talk about it and then let that person know then, and that's what we do, this is, every meeting we're evaluating, and he knows, if he's in compliant, we tell him, if he's not in compliant, we tell him, and if he's not in compliant, we know that, we talk about it, it's like, okay, how are you going to get back in compliance? What do you need to do? In his first year, there are some things that, because carried over from previous year, he was not in compliant, but somewhat out of his control, but now, now how are you going to get us in compliance? Let's look forward, what are we doing to change this to get in compliance? And so that monitoring report is important, because that's part of his evaluation, that's a piece of his evaluation. And we're just, the systematic process of the policy governance model, a meaningful superintendent evaluation process, which Rob mentioned earlier, we have never had, until we started this, we have never had a meaningful superintendent evaluation. It's like, yeah, he did pretty good, I think, this year, that was good, he's, yeah. A meaningful board self-assessment, we have, we go through, and like I said, we evaluate ourselves, and we go through a series, I don't know how, I don't remember how many questions there are on our evaluation that we do ourselves, but there's. Yeah, but at one time it was fifty questions that we were, so then a process for focusing on results, what the results and moving ahead, how do we keep, continue to improve. A process for monitoring district operations, again, we just, it's an overview, things are going well, we're making progress, which is part of our policy review, I mean, our monitoring process of our policies, and then a process for linking with your community, which is a, something that we continue to strive to do better, and it is a process to get there, so. And then collectively, a strategy for governing, because it takes, it's a group effort, it's all five of us to govern the school district, not just one person.
So that's the, that's the end of this school session, but it's still open for questions, does anybody have any other questions or other topics? Do you want to look at specific policies at our ends? Chris could pull them up if you want to look at, if you haven't already read them and looked at them.
Yes, I think that that would be good to look at.
So just so you guys know.
Even just to leave them up there, whether we say or not.
If you go to, if you go to board docs, there's a public section of board docs that you can get to from the, from the, our school website, it's public, all these policies are in there, under policies, so if you go to the, if you go to our website and click on meetings, I think it is, on our website, you can get to this policies section, and you can actually go to the, now that you know what you're looking at, there's the four sections, ends, B S Rs, executive limitations, government, and GPs, and you can click on them, and click on any policy and see them. So just go to the, go to ends one. And the way that system is, unfortunately, it's hard to pull it up, all is one document, but you can read through it and scroll through it and see it. But none of the policies are very, they're not very long, but when you read through them, there's a lot in them. So like ends one, for example, it, I'll just read it, says, "In an environment of equity and respect, each scholar will graduate with the academic success and ethical behavior to succeed as a responsible citizen and ready to compete in our global society." So that's the overarching statement of that policy, and there's a lot in there. When Dr. Hurst gives us his compliance of ends one, it's not five sentences, it's a lot to be able to provide evidence of that. And then in this policy, we drill down and put more specifically, "Each scholar at every grade level will perform at or above the state or district standards in all disciplines. All scholars will demonstrate evidence of continuous growth and improvement in their performance year over year, closing the opportunity and achievement gaps. All scholars will demonstrate transfer of knowledge and skills across disciplines." And then it continues to go, that's it, yeah.
So we, this was a big one, we just had, we had a consultant come in and really help us take our ends and make them very concise and clear. We had rewritten them a couple times already, and she really helped us to take all of our words and be more concise with them, and I really liked the way it came out, but in order to show that, it's going to take a lot of data for Dr. Hurst to show us if every student is growing, right? So it'll be a long report, I look forward to it.
So on the evaluation, you know, process, like say, the board's self-evaluation, or the evaluation of what Dr. Hurst provides for how he's achieving these goals, is there any type of guidance, or like, for example, I mean, do you guys present how you go about evaluating that? I mean, do you display your own self-evaluation report and what that appears like out there? Is that something that happens?
Yeah.
Executive type session?
Yeah, so when it's a policy, the self-evaluation's different, the self-evaluation is when we're monitoring our, the policies that apply to the job we're doing, which is a G P and the B S Rs. The ends and the E Ls were determining compliance of the superintendent, so they're monitored slightly different, but all of them, the process that we do is Dr. Hurst on the ones that we're monitoring him, he provides us a written report, here's, here's, I'm in compliance or I'm not in compliance, here's why, here's my data, and then the board does a survey monkey, we do, each of us do an independent survey, where we go through and answer, we've changed, we changed this policy, and we answer it line by line as a question, so we go through and we answer, is the superintendent, in my personal opinion, is the superintendent in compliance or not in compliance with this policy? And if he's not in compliance, then there's a comment section where I would write, this is why I don't believe that we're in compliance with this. All of those survey monkeys get compiled, the reason we do that is because it would take a long time in a board meeting, and it could get fractured, because, you know, I want to say, I believe this, and Rob believes that, and Stuart believes this, and Mike believes this. It's easier for us to, each one of our, take our time at home, go through the policy really intently, and do the survey monkey, and then in the board meeting, we discuss the results of the survey monkey. So we go through and say, maybe, maybe all five board members felt like that this section of that policy was in compliance, so we don't need to spend a lot of time on it. Then we go, we can drill down to the ones where either the board disagrees with each other, and then we can discuss, okay, and we, and so Rob may say, okay, I felt like it was not in compliance, here's why, and a board member, another board member say, well, I think it's in compliance, and here's why, and then eventually the board comes to a consensus as a group, does that kind of make sense, how that process works?
So I have a question then, in the agenda then, you're saying that Dr. Hurst writes his novel of, this is what I think about how I'm in compliance, and then you all read it, then do your survey monkey before, then...
Before the next meeting.
Right, before the meeting, between that Friday and then the Monday meeting.
No, no, so he gives us, we give him a board meeting before, we tell him, here's when, ends one, for example, here's when it's due, August fifteenth, you have to have it to us by that date. So he has to have it in the board meeting, in the board packet, that date, we accept it, that we've received it, and then we take it home and study it. We have two weeks to study it, do the survey monkey, and come back, because our board meetings are every two weeks. Yeah, so the, so our off week, we do, sometime during that week, we do the survey monkey, sometime before the Friday, before the meeting, so we, you don't just have three days to study it, you have like ten to study the reports.
So, but the reports come out to the public on that Friday before then, but you get them?
We get them on, we get them when everybody, we get them whenever it goes live on the board packet.
Okay.
But we don't actually do the survey monkey until after that board meeting, it's not...
Until after you've actually discussed that somewhat and had the ends evaluation, okay.
Yeah, yeah, and then, so that next meeting, we determine as a board, if Dr. Hurst was in compliance or not, and then we fill out a statement, a report that we give him that the president signs, that says, we think you're in compliance, we think you're not in compliance, and if you're not in compliance, here's why, if you're in compliance, we sometimes put on there and say, we really are impressed that you did this, we'll put that in the statement.
So does that just happen with the ends, or does that also happen with the B S R?
All the E Ls. The B S Rs we do ourselves.
Okay.
So we're monitoring ourselves, it happens the same way, except for we're monitoring each other instead of the superintendent. So like if you pull up a, a, pull up one of the, say, the policies, go down to the, to G P... Keep going down, I was looking for one that we might look at, G P five, there you go, president's role. So this is a policy that says what the president of the board is allowed to do, so we're monitoring the board president in this policy. So we go through and take our, there's no report, and so we just go through as a board and say, we answer the questions, we say, as an individual board member, is the president conducting and monitoring board meeting deliberations to ensure that only board issues, as defined as a board policy, are discussed? We say yes or no, put our comments in the same way, and then the board holds itself accountable. When it's talking about board self-evaluations, that's where they come from, is from these, all the G P policies and all the board superintendent relationships, like G P ten, the board member covenants, that's where it spells out what each of us as a board member decides that have agreed, that these are the rules to how we communicate with each other, so there's a, there's a big list of them, children come first, we exercise honesty in all communications, most of it, you would think is common sense, but we put it in the policy, and we hold ourselves to these things. But it's the same process, except for there's no, there's no report, the board just goes straight to the survey monkey, and we answer the questions, are, do I feel as a board we're doing this, or we're not doing this? And then we discuss it and find ourselves, we've found ourselves out of compliance as a board at least a couple times, where we've had to check ourselves and say, you know, especially with agenda, I know with agenda planning, because we struggle sometimes as a board, we should be, we've agreed that we're only going to talk about things in board meetings that have to do with our policies, and from time to time, we struggle with that, and so we hold each other accountable to that. There'll be times in a board meeting, I don't like it, but where Director Simmons will stop me, I'm on a, I'm on a roll, and I'm really talking about something, I say, well, what policy referring to? I'll say, I don't know, it's a good question, there isn't a policy.
I want to make a comment, just kind of to clarify a little bit, so just for instance, let's say it's two months in a row where you have two weeks in between each board meeting, right, second, fourth, so like the first board meeting of the first month, we would get a monitoring report from Dr. Hurst, if it's an E L, it's going to be as a written report in our general consent, and we approve it. If it's an ends, he'll give a verbal report, because the ends are the big ones. Yeah, it's written, but he also verbally, he goes over it, because those are the big, that's the big ones, right? That's our, that's the end zone. The next meeting is when we discuss the results of our survey monkeys. The next meeting after that is when it goes into policy review, where we have an opportunity to say, do we want to rewrite this policy, do you want to change it, or do we want to get rid of it, like Stuart was saying, so that's the process, it's a three-meeting process. And with the G Ps, it's a two-meeting process, because we just go right to the survey monkey results, and then policy review after that.
Just a note on the website, is this not mobile-friendly?
I think, is the, is the refresh one released yet, Chris?
Not yet, it's twenty-four.
Okay. I had heard, because somebody just gets to renew every website he goes to.
Hopefully it's mobile-friendly, because I, that's how I access it personally, so.
And that was a, that was a big thing when I was in the first meeting about that, and everyone, everyone wanted it to be mobile-friendly, so I think that's, that was a big focus.
Any other questions, comments, thoughts?
Could we change these comments, let's see, what's the right word? References from football to quilting.
If you get elected, and the, and you can get two other board members to go with you.
Okay, right on, okay, all right, I'll see what I can do there.
Actually, regardless of whether or not you get elected, if you get three board members to agree with you, it can happen.
So with that, we'll go back to the agenda, if there's no other questions, and move on to item D one, I'll accept a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
A motion by Director Simmons to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Director Hilmus, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.